Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's presentation brought to you by the planning commission and town of Brattleboro. I'd like to introduce you to tonight's presenters. We have Roger Hawk here and also Stu Arnett, who are here to discuss Brattleboro's commercial districts. This is the second public meeting that we've had where we're focusing on the four major commercial districts in town. That's the downtown, Putney Road, West Brattleboro on Route 9, and the exit one Canal Street area. And Mr. Hawk here has been doing some demographic statistical analysis and would like to present material on that tonight, and then we'll have some time for discussion towards the end. I'd like to make a special note welcoming the select board members, particularly to new select board members. Thanks for coming. Thanks, everybody else, for coming, and enjoy your experience.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to give you a qualifier. I've got a cold, so if I'm coughing especially into the microphone for the TV audience, I apologize. I brought water. I've brought as many props as I can to support me, but hopefully I'll make it through. If I fall on the ground, Stu's going to pick up and carry on. And I have to move around to do this, too. Very quickly, tonight's agenda. I want to go through and give you a real quick overview of why we're here, recap the last meeting, and, as Rod just said, the bulk of the presentation we're going to do and the feedback we want to get from you is reacting to some of the data and demographic information that we're going to provide you this evening as a way of focusing on where you are today and where you might be in the future, five, 10, 15 years into the future. Purpose of this project, as we understood it at least, was you've got three, I think, very well-done district plans for Canal Street, West Brattleboro, and Putney Road. There is no plan for downtown, which frankly astounded me. It's something that I think a community of this stature and the quality of downtown you have is a big void. You need to think about doing that, but I'm now editorializing. The point of this, from our perspective, is to take those three separate plans that were done at different times with different inputs and merge them into one cohesive package that makes sense both in terms of what the community, the neighborhood, want to see and also with a dose of economic reality. And economic reality changes from year to year. Obviously, two or three years ago, the world turned upside down based on what's going on with the national economy, and it's hit all of us in different ways. So that's going to change over time as well. But the important thing is to have a cohesive package with your whole community-town plan that makes both internal and external sense. So that's why we're here. Recap of the past meeting, very quickly. There was a handout that -- is that -- have you handed those out? You can read those later if you want. I'm going to quickly go through the -- some of the high points. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, just to bring those of you that were not at the previous meeting up to speed a little bit on what we concluded. The last meeting, we very quickly went through all of those three corridor plans for the three districts and tried to do a little bit of a reality check to say, is this stuff that was -- some of it was done 10 years ago, does it still make sense? And the comments that I've capsulized here will hopefully capture the sentiment of the group discussion. Common themes among all four districts really were need to upgrade the overall visual quality of each of those districts, building signage, public infrastructure like sidewalk, street trees, street signage for directional signage and so forth, strengthening pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, better sidewalks, and places for people with bicycles to get into and through those districts, and a stronger orientation to the surrounding neighborhood, depending on which district you're looking at.
By the way, while Roger's pushing the button, logistically, if you want to slow him down with a question, put it on the floor.
Yep, do it.
And we're going to have some slides here, and then there are going to be a lot of numbers, so we're going to give you some time to look at it, and you'll also have a chance to get the handout of all the slides after. We'll have it posted back in somewhere, right?
Well, yeah, we'll put this on the -- up on the web somewhere.
If my -- feel free to use it.
Right.
You can also make the PDF of the PowerPoint presentation available on our website.
Yeah.
We bought a copy of the one.
I'll shoot it to you. So specifically on Canal Street, there was a feeling that there needed to be a less automobile-oriented focus, not to eliminate the automobile, but do traffic calming, slowing cars down to make it fit in more with the neighborhood, consolidate parking. This was all in the original Canal Street plan. Strengthen the corridor as a gateway to the community and the downtown and the state. More focus on the neighborhood services as opposed to serving the broader community or even the travel public that is going through that corridor to get from the highway into the downtown and pay more attention to the relationship between the neighborhoods, the school, and the hospital. And the other question that we asked of all these breakout groups at the last meeting was, does the plan that was already produced reinforce, hurt, or have no impact on the downtown? Because the downtown was seen as a very -- obviously, a very important feature of your community. I think it's one of the gems that you have in this town, is a wonderful, very strong and vital downtown. And so we asked the question, how does that plan affect your downtown? And Canal Street, basically, they concluded it really doesn't -- it doesn't do anything plus or minus to it. It's kind of a neutral situation. West Brattleboro plan, again, focus on neighborhood services for the people that live in and around. This is both the Village Center and a little bit further west, as you get to the westerly edge of the commercial corridor out there. They felt there was a need for some focus on through services for through traffic because Route 9 is an important artery across the southern part of the state, and there are services there today, and I think the feeling was that some modest level of that needs to continue. West Brattleboro, in their opinion, doesn't compete with the downtown, but if aesthetic improvements are made, that will obviously enhance the people's initial reaction to Brattleboro as a whole and enhance the value, people's perception of how they see Brattleboro as a whole and the downtown proper. Putney Road, better interconnections between side streets. That was something that I think was very important that came out of that study. You've got one major road, and if you don't have side streets that interconnect with each other, you have to go out -- back out on the Putney Road, and the consequence is you're jamming all the traffic onto the main artery without any relief valve for people to get around on side streets. So reinforcing those side roads connections is important. There was a feeling that higher density and mixed-use activity, which was in the original Putney Road plan, was desirable, maybe not to the density that that plan anticipated because, for those of you that weren't here, the build-out plan for the Putney -- in the Putney Road concept ultimately produced building square footage that was well in excess of what you have in downtown Brattleboro. So it would actually eclipse what you've got in the downtown today if it built out the way that plan envisioned. They did, however, say that there's a need for infill development on properties that are currently underutilized. You've got some vacant or underutilized properties. They need to see some reuse and become actively -- economically active again. Big question, is there an economic market for proposed development intensity that they are suggesting? Is there an audience for all of the kinds of businesses, retail, and office uses that were proposed in the Putney Road plan? That's what we're going to talk about with a lot of the data I'm going to present you this evening. And finally, full development of the plan actually could compete with the downtown based on the volume of activity that was anticipated and the kinds of uses that were proposed as well. Downtown, as I said before, there's no comprehensive plan for the downtown. I think that's a huge void that you need to address in the near term. Downtown is the heart and focus of the community. I think all of you realize that. It's a gem. It always needs improvement. Every good downtown does. You have to keep working at that. You are doing it, and I think it's just a matter of keeping, you know, continuing to plug away. There was a suggestion that there needs to be a refocus on the riverfront, better access to it, highlighting arts and culture even more than you do now, more mixed-use buildings, and a comprehensive marketing strategy that we know is underway right now with another consultant that has been hired by BABB. Okay, regional economic context. What -- how does Brattleboro fit in with the other communities and counties around you? This, courtesy of Rod, I had to go back to the U.S. Census because the brand-new 2010 numbers literally just came out last week for the -- we already had them for Vermont. I didn't have them for New Hampshire and Massachusetts. I now have them -- these are just the basic population numbers, not many of the details. But here's what you see for what's going on in the other commercial business centers that you're either competing with or have some influence on what happens to your community. Keene, this is 1990, 2000, 2010. The percentage changes over on the right in black are changes from 2000 to 2010. Keene grew by a little under 4 percent. Greenfield went down about 4 percent. Lebanon was up 4 and 1/2 percent, and Brattleboro was chugging along, almost flatlined at plus .34 percent. You grew by a hundred -- a couple hundred people in the last 10 years. County population, the three surrounding counties, your county, Wyndham, grew by 7/10 of a percent. Franklin County in Massachusetts dropped by 2/10. Cheshire went up by 4 and 1/2.
Does Franklin County include North Hampton?
No, North Hampton is in Hampshire County, right. Thank you. There -- I looked at the -- when you're doing market analysis, we often pay too much attention, I think, to what are considered primary and secondary market areas. And the people that are working on the downtown market study right now for the BABB came up with some figures based on who the primary audience was for downtown Brattleboro and the secondary audience. Primary audience is those -- are those communities or locations where people do a daily or weekly shopping trip and do regular business in the designated destination that you're talking about. The secondary market is less frequent. This analysis was done from a study back in 2001 that I think is more representative of the entire community of Brattleboro. Given the fact that you've got shopping opportunities in Keene, in Massachusetts, some people go as far as Lebanon. I've even heard of people in the Connecticut Valley going all the way down to the Holy Elk Mall because that's maybe the nearest shopping mall. I don't know. But I chose to look at this in the context of the 2001 study because I think it gives you a better sense of where some of your audience is. I don't think the primary audience, which is in the salmon color, Brattleboro's the star in the middle. And just so you know, this is the state line, and this is the Connecticut River dividing New Hampshire and Vermont, New Hampshire. And they were suggesting that most of the county is primary market area with a few of the adjacent communities in New Hampshire and only a couple in Massachusetts serving the primary function of people going regularly to shop in Brattleboro. I think that demographics changed some with increases in retail activity in Keene, the potential of a Super Walmart across the river in Hinsdale is a whole other ballgame, but it gives you a sense of where your retail business audience is. It's certainly the immediate community surrounding you, and the secondary market maybe as far as all three of those counties. Yeah?
You're saying this is retail market?
Yes.
And is this for just the downtown area?
No, this is --
Because I have completely different demographics for another retail type of business.
I'd like to hear about that because one of the things I wish we had the time and resources to do was to do what they did for the downtown study. They did a zip code and now asked several of the businesses in the downtown to develop a zip code analysis of their customers.
I understand.
And if I could get that for businesses all over Brattleboro, that would be really helpful to me.
And the reason we're going with the one that's nine years old, it's bigger. It shows a bigger -- the assessment came out of the one recently for the downtown versions doesn't have anything in the New Hampshire market other than just the one that --
Right.
-- nine going up a little bit.
I guess the only reason I'm saying is Vermont is a tourist state. I mean, there are a lot of tourism businesses in the state of Vermont, and I draw up Connecticut and New Hampshire remain in a number of different areas also, and that doesn't seem to factor into this.
Yeah.
What you have to give.
Well, no, this -- primary and secondary is different from -- there's another market that's beyond secondary that is occasional traffic, and that doesn't take into account travelers that are coming from much further distances. But I hear what you're saying. Yes?
Just a quick clarification on the downtown study. Basically, 23 businesses downtown collected zip codes, and there was a whole lot of people from out of the area, which is good news that people are coming in. We are a destination. But question on this, and I should probably know this from the study because I have a copy of it, but how do they determine this? You know, are they -- do they -- did they do some kind of survey? Was there some sort of demographic, you know, what is -- what's the basis for making this determination?
I believe --
Like the downtown --
I believe there was a survey done. I don't know that it was a zip code analysis, which is a very common way to do it nowadays. I'm not -- I'm not sure what Seidman did back in 2001.
Right, thanks.
Obviously, part of it's just location, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Finally, taking those primary and secondary market communities, adding up all the numbers, there was reasonably significant population growth between 1990 and 2000, but it flattened off between 2000, 2010 in both markets. I think the difference between the secondary market rising at a steeper rate than the primary is that secondary market included all of Cheshire County and New Hampshire, which had a 3 and 1/2 percent growth rate. Both your county and Franklin County in Massachusetts grew at a slower rate. So that explains why you've got a slower curve on the primary and a steeper curve on the secondary. Okay, changing market conditions for economic numbers. I wanted to take a look at surrounding counties and communities and look at them in the context of the number of businesses that have come and gone over the last -- from 1997 to 2007, which is the last set of nationally available numbers, looking at the number -- total number of employees in each of those jurisdictions, and then also total sales. So I'm going to go through these one at a time, and it'll give you a sense of what we're looking at.
So the number of businesses is number of registered companies. If we have one person, it could be a company to 1,000 people. That's a company.
Right. We're just looking at numbers of businesses.
Employees, the second cut through, and then you'll see sales, and the third.
And the other caveat is it's called covered employment. It's the businesses that have to report to your state employment security office because their employees are covered by unemployment compensation. That's where all this data comes from. So it does not include smaller businesses that are not subject to that requirement. So a one- or two-, three-person business potentially is not going to show up here. And without belaboring this, the five largest categories, just to give you a sense of where your biggest numbers of businesses are, retail trade over at 9 o'clock there, 17 percent, professional technical services, 8 percent of your numbers of businesses, healthcare, social assistance, 13 percent, essentially restaurants and hotels, 11 percent, and miscellaneous category, other services except public administration, is 10 percent. Gives you some sense of the kinds of businesses that make up your community today. This is a little -- no, that's not little. It's very confusing. A lot of numbers. I want you to focus on the colors. I tried to do this so we could simplify the discussion. On the left column here is industry description. These are the categories that the federal government uses for different kinds of businesses. They're called -- it's the National North American Industrial Classification System. It's a way of categories -- categorizing every kind of business that happens in the United States of America, and they lump them into different categories. So those are the kinds of businesses that we're looking at. We've got communities and counties across the horizontal axis, and what I've done is taken the percentage of change between 1997 and 2007 and figured out what the difference is. Again, this is number of business establishments. The salmon or pinkish-colored boxes are negative numbers, in other words, decline by type of business activity, and the green is positive. Manufacturing's the top category. Nearly everybody lost ground there. That's a national phenomenon. We're losing manufacturing offshore to places outside the United States. New England actually does a little better than most of the country on that, but we're still losing ground. Greenfield's the only one that came out a little positive. Retail trade, negative all the way across the board. This is numbers of businesses, don't forget. Real estate rental and leasing, it's basically real estate offices and that sort of thing. You gained a little bit. You've got mixed responses from the other jurisdictions. Professional and scientific organizations, that could be engineering companies, surveyors, other technical professions. You lost almost 9 percent. Everybody else gained by some degree. Administrative and support functions, which is a long list of things, but they include stuff like collection agencies, hiring, temporary agencies, that kind of thing. You gained 5 percent. There were a couple of losers in Keene and Lebanon, and the others grew by different degrees. Educational services, healthcare, arts and entertainment, everybody went up. You were kind of in the middle at 75 percent. Combination and food services is basically hotels and restaurants, and you and several other communities grew, a few of them lost, and then there's a miscellaneous category here. So just looking at that, you get a sense of what -- where your current strengths and weaknesses are based on surrounding jurisdictions. Yes?
Where's banking and finance?
This fire, it's finance.
Finance, insurance, and real estate. And I think the finance part didn't show up because on some of these, we're dealing with such small numbers that may not even be there.
And banking?
That -- on numbers of establishments, when they get down to very small numbers on any of these categories, there's two blanks over in Wyndham County.
This numbers is business establishment, so if they're not established here, they wouldn't be listed here.
So all the banks that are located other places would be a lot like.
Right.
So, Stu, clarify that. So if we have banking branches but no headquarters, then?
Like everything except for --
It doesn't show.
If Vermont National was still headquartered here, you'd have much higher numbers, even though you might have the same number of banking employees. I think that'll probably hopefully show up.
Yeah, you'll -- when you see the employee numbers, that'll be very different. But just to point out, those -- these two blanks here, the -- because they're dealing with confidential information, the federal government and even the state suppresses data when the numbers get too small because they don't want to divulge the nature of businesses that are doing this reporting. So wherever you see a blank, it means that they were -- they were worried about confidentiality being broken. Just to highlight a couple of the establishments or industrial categories that we were discussing in the previous slide, this just highlights manufacturing establishments. Brattleboro lost some. Keene lost a lot, 25 percent. Greenfield was the only one that went up of the comparison communities that we're looking at.
Question over here.
Yep.
I know some educational institutions who have these very high numbers.
Oh, we went the wrong way.
Last -- I don't know if that's confusing.
I'm having trouble going backwards here.
I just wondered if you --
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Educational institutions, I think it was called, have really high numbers. How's it going? On that grid? Is there any --
Yeah, there are.
These are number of establishments. My hunch is that, yeah, there's one, Wyndham County's got a 1,200 percent gain.
We were 150, and they're pretty high all the way.
Yeah.
130.
I'm not sure why that is, but I -- my hunch is that you're probably dealing with small numbers to start, and they grew by two or three or four establishments. So the numbers went crazy.
Get out of the camera.
Okay?
If you can't find it.
I'm going the wrong way again. Where am I? For some reason, my slide can't go backwards right now. Pardon me. Okay, manufacturing establishments, we covered that. Retail trade establishments. Everybody's losing ground. Simple -- my simple explanation of that is that the little guys are getting beaten out by the big guys. You've got a Walmart across the river that is impacting smaller businesses in the broader region that is affecting the number of establishments you've got in your community, and every one of these, they are consolidating into other larger businesses.
Are you happy for, like, Home Depot leaving? They came and left within that same time.
Remember, this is still establishments, so come to go to Walmart.
So the numbers just be one.
Yeah, we'll get the number of employees then.
Number of employees is coming up next. Yeah.
I noticed you covered 97 to 2007. That's four years ago.
And before the bust, yes.
Is there any trend?
The U.S. Census, economic -- economic census is done every five years, 97, 2002, 2007. There will be another one coming out shortly, but it's not here yet. And the other reason, and I thought about that, the -- even though this is pre-economic recession numbers, it gives you an indication of where you've been over the last decade. I think we're all hoping that we're through the worst of it now. In the next several years, we'll be recovering somewhat from -- probably not back to these figures, but something better. Yeah? Yes?
So when you were collecting your data, did you get any information on -- because there's a big effect on retail establishments from internet sales and catalog sales, and did you -- did you get any data on that?
That does not come through in the numbers that we're using for this analysis.
How about trends in terms of, like, in 97, was it slower to close up to the 2000s? Like, because the day range is 10 years, but more of that was happening later in the --
I could have put 2002 numbers in there, but I was trying to keep it simple. I'm trying to show you long-term trends and what's happening in Brattleboro compared to either surrounding or potentially competing communities for business activity. I mean, these are the other jurisdictions that are within your economic market area. So it's really trying to do a comparison and say, how are -- how's Brattleboro doing compared to these other places?
We could put a five-year in the middle, that could show you a halfway line on the stock of the company. I think the point is, if you're thinking that you're going to ride retail much further, this gives you one piece of information to work on.
Yeah.
It's not conclusive, this is one piece of information.
Professional technical establishments, Brattleboro's the only one that's down by 10 percent. Some are up. Some are up considerably, including Wyndham County, which I thought was interesting, disparity between Brattleboro and the remainder of the county.
And those are numbers of establishments still?
Yeah, we're still numbers of establishments. Yeah, we're still numbers of establishments.
Roger, can we just go back to this slide for a second?
Nope.
I don't want to hear the side of the air.
No, I can't go there. Sorry.
The total is, the total is sixty-four, so ten percent is six, so.
Right, I was just going to say, when you're, when you're looking at percentage changes, the ten percent reduction in the number of establishments in Brattleboro might be a much smaller number than.
That's true.
The number represented by the thirty percent gain in the county. Okay?
Yeah, good point.
So, it's, you're just dealing with, with a statistical effect that's very important, Rodney.
Healthcare and social assistance, everybody's up, you guys are near the top, so that looks pretty good. Hotels and restaurants, you're doing pretty well, actually. Cheshire County as a whole is doing a little bit better, but you're doing well compared to the comparison communities. Okay, numbers of employees, this is getting us a little closer to, I think, reality. The circled ones are the bigger ones, starting at the bottom, retail trade, there's a fourteen percent, fourteen percent of the total employment of ten thousand seven sixty-five, number in the bottom right corner. Fourteen percent of that number is, the people are employed in retail trade, going in a clockwise fashion. Healthcare and social services, twenty percent of the workforce is there. Combination and food services, ten percent, government, twelve. Wholesale trade is ten, and manufacturing is twelve. So, it just gives you a, starts to give you a feel for what makes up Brattleboro's employment base. Yes?
So, we have a correlation about twelve thousand in total employment, about almost eleven, is it the regional high, or is that?
That's because you've got people coming into town to work. You're an employment center.
It's against where they're working, not where they're living on this.
Right. This is, this is what's reported by the employer. So, it's not where you live, it's where you work.
What are covered employees?
That, that's the, that's the issue, they're, people, these are companies that pay unemployment compensation insurance to the state. That's where this database comes from. Okay, here we are.
Oh, just to follow up on that.
Yep.
What about the coverage involving insurance, health coverage? Did you get into that at all? Because that's become very large.
I'm not following you.
Those who are covered by.
Who are covered by health insurance.
That's not something we look at here.
Right.
So, different data set.
It's, it wouldn't be covered, the reporting that is somewhat voluntary, so it's more a survey.
Yes.
So, just to go back to what you were saying, the numbers on that last pie chart are coming from the employers that are paying unemployment insurance?
That are located in Brattleboro.
That are located in Brattleboro. So, if it's an independent, small.
It excludes anybody, and it's going to be the smaller businesses, and I know a lot of your downtown is made up of that, and I know a lot of your community is.
Yes.
But, we don't have good data on that. I would have gone back to the two thousand U.S. Census, which is the last place I could capture that information, but it's so old, I didn't think it was particularly useful. And the two thousand and ten data for that set of numbers is not there, we don't have it yet.
But, it's apples to apples because you're not measuring in any of the places. So, if you're trying to figure out trends or competitive position, you're getting the same imperfect data for everything consistent.
Right. So, we're, we're, well, the, the point is, we're using, and that's very important, because we're trying to use exactly the same data sources for every one of these communities, and that's why it's important to get something that we can compare absolutely apples to apples. If we took New Hampshire Employment Security, Vermont Employment Security, Massachusetts Employment Security, you're going to get some vagaries in, in between them, and that's why I'm using U.S. Census-produced numbers, because I know there's absolute consistency between how they collect, analyze, and evaluate those figures.
That number of about eleven thousand covered employees in Brattleboro, is that actually people who are working at, like, the banks that are in Brattleboro but that are established out there?
Yes, yes. Okay, this is similar to the chart that I did, showed you ten slides earlier on number of businesses. This is number of employees. Again, the salmon color is negative growth in, or decline essentially, in numbers of employees between ninety-seven and two thousand and seven. Green is positive growth or gain. And, again, look at the trends. Manufacturing is down almost across, across the board. Retail trade, it's a mixed bag. You've got growth in Keene, Greenfield, Lebanon, Cheshire County, Franklin County, and decline in Brattleboro, North Hampton, and the balance of Wyndham County. Real estate rental leasing, I don't want to pay too much attention to that because it's a very small number, but just, you know where that's coming from. Professional, scientific, you're up pretty high, as is the remainder of the county. And you've got big gaps in data sets here. Look at all the empty cells that we're looking at. That's because they have small numbers, and we can't report those. They don't report them to us, so we can't use them. So, this.
Example, Brattleboro, see the blank for educational services, that's probably because Marlboro or somebody is such a single large employer that if you put the number there, you would know exactly what that one employer does. So, there has to be enough of a pool for the Census to publish it, or they just leave it blank, and that's why you see that many blocks.
And I.
While I agree with you in theory, sorry, what's weird about Brattleboro is that there are four higher education institutions and supervisory union.
I would surprise that that went up there.
Yeah, I know.
And the union high school with a large faculty, so I'm a little, I'm a little bit puzzled about that one.
And a number of independent schools too.
Well, and when you look at Wyndham County, that can't possibly be the explanation for a lot of those.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that all, but anyway.
We can check, but the schools tend to, tend to be in government, though, and not in.
Some of the deprived institutions.
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway, again, look at the, look at the trends of what you've got going on. Manufacturing's down, retail, at least for Brattleboro, is down. You've got growth in all the other categories. So, in terms of number of people that are working in Brattleboro, you're not doing bad. You've got some categories that are not doing so hot, but many others that are doing well. Yes?
Here, the employees of the banks should be reflected. What was mine are the reflected.
I was going to say, it's, the, the old, we're, did a break where you're, the old fire, finance, insurance, real estate has no longer been broken up, so that's why you see real estate in one area, but it would basically be in, there you've got some here, services.
It's going to be in other.
Here you've got some here.
Okay.
By the way, this, this number, some of them needs to explain, that's a, that's an interesting, almost a four-hundred percent increase.
Yeah.
Does this reflect a national trend going towards a service economy?
Yeah. The trend for the last couple decades has been away from manufacturing. You're seeing lower manufacturing numbers, not universally, but on an average throughout the United States, because they're moving offshore, and we're becoming more and more of a service-oriented economy, very clearly.
Yeah, and just to give you some, New, New England is like eleven to fifteen percent historically in manufacturing until recently now, it's probably eight, nine percent, and yet the industrial, the manufacturing output is actually higher. So, the bad news is true, people are working in manufacturing jobs. The good news is because to some degree, it's also more productive, so.
More efficient.
The person's actually higher.
Yep.
So, it's just, it's becoming much more, it's much like farming went through fifty, sixty years ago, where it used to take five or six people, now it takes one or two.
Yep.
I think there's some oversimplification of this, or just general, generalization, which misses some of the potentials that can happen, like, for example, specialty products on the rise in Vermont, which are bucking the trends. So, I, I think that it behooves us all to drill in to the data. Otherwise, I think we're wasting our time.
The, again, the point of this, the numbers that I'm trying to show you here is to give you a flavor for where Brattleboro is compared to the rest of the Brattleboro market, if you will. It is not exact, it is really trying to show you some trends that are going on and leading us to a discussion at the end of this meeting about where we think Brattleboro wants to go. You're making a very good point, there are, there's a lot of detail that gets lost in this. But, we're looking at kind of bigger chunks of data and bigger discussions about the economic future of Brattleboro. So, some of those details will fall, they may fall between the cracks on this discussion, but they'll come out before we get to the finish line. Yeah?
These numbers have been based on the unemployment insurance?
Yes. Yeah, all of this data I'm giving you tonight is from that.
So, like, a lawyer or a doctor sort of working themselves and not necessarily paying.
They probably wouldn't show up.
They'd really show up.
They would be professional, scientific, technical services, this category, if they paid into that unemployment compensation system. In back? Yep.
Just an observation, I'm wondering retail trade, if the increase in Keene, Greenfield, Lebanon, those communities have much more big box chain kind of things that are, activity that's happened in the, you know, Keene, that whole mall, right after you.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All that's probably happened in that timeframe, and it's a difference between Brattleboro and much more independently owned retail establishments in general than those other areas, so it's just a thought.
And we do a lot of work for Valley, and that's clearly what's happened with Lebanon.
Yeah, yeah, and I would imagine, well, Greenfield, because that huge Home Depot and I, I.
I have.
Yeah, I think that.
I've been in the last five.
The, the national chains that are moving into places where there's growth, like Cheshire County, and they're, you know, I hate to say it, but unfortunately, they're moving there versus here because of that little tax differential.
Right. I'm not sure we all know that, as, as a community, whether that's a decision or not, but I mean, I think that's the nature of the beast right now, so.
Right.
So, but I think that reflects that.
Yep. In back?
Sorry, can you talk, you mentioned a little bit about the astronomical percentages change for healthcare and social assistance. You can look across the board, though, some of the percentages, nine hundred percent, two hundred fifty percent, six hundred percent, this is huge change.
Yeah, we'll talk about it later when we get to the potential recommendations, but the oversimplistic adage in the last few years has been buildings growing or Edson Meds, and this is offsetting, so this is even before it ramped up a little bit.
But, did you characterize it?
Edson Meds, education and.
And medicine.
Right, Edson Meds.
If you really think about new buildings or one or the other, for the most part, there's obviously some other things. But, that's why I was kind of interested in education services, blind there. See, there's also four fifty, four twenty in education too, so those have been the two strongest markets nationally, and certainly in the Northeast.
Okay, you got, yeah, I'm sorry, got some more. Yes?
On the manufacturing, he was saying about the percentages, it could be only like six businesses here, seven, but Keene lost like twenty-six percent of their manufacturing, which made a shift in their employees by like twenty-five percent, whereas our manufacturing, we lost thirteen percent, but we're almost forty-three percent change in employees. We took a heavy hit. Maybe it was a few businesses, but they were.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I'm not sure about history, somebody else in the home shores about this, right, but I think that might have been Georgia Pacific or, I mean, some, and, or some pretty big employers that, that shut down.
Okay. Ma'am, you had a question?
Am I remembering correctly a slide previous, the professional and scientific was below the line in red.
As far as number of companies, yes.
Yes, and yet it's gone by almost forty-one percent.
So, what, what that's saying is, is you've got fewer but larger businesses in that sector.
So, those sectors are.
So, you've lost banks that are here, but you've, you've picked up some bank employees, you've picked up some insurance, you've picked up some financial advisors, you've picked up dental hygienists, but fewer local firms, more employees. Can you think about it, that's, you know, there's many more regional, national banks than there used to be ten years ago, so.
Okay. Yep.
So, without knowing the number of employees in each of these sectors, but just looking at the percentages, like, it's possible that losing forty-three percent of manufacturing employees over that time period is, means that we've lost more employees than we've gained with all those other green increases in those other sectors, which are maybe much smaller in terms of numbers of employees. What's the total number of employees from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and seven?
Yeah, I can give you that number on these slides from the, for Brattleboro, it's ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-five employees.
That was in two thousand and nine, but what was it from the beginning to the end of that period?
I can get you that information. I, I was, I'm throwing a lot of information at you, and I was trying to summarize.
We know, we know that the older side of the population's exactly almost the same pretenders.
Right.
So, theoretically, the labor market should be pretty close to the.
Right, but one, one way of summarizing it, what we were just looking at a second ago, was we're doing pretty well. We've lost in manufacturing, we've lost in retail, but look, we're making gains in all these others. But, all those other gains might just be peanuts compared to the losses.
Good point.
So, if we don't know that without knowing what the numbers are, behind the percentages.
And we.
We know the percentages, but, but a three hundred sixty-eight percent increase in whatever that category is, might mean seven more jobs.
We, we can show you the raw numbers, I just didn't, for summary reasons, I didn't do it tonight. Yes?
So, we'll get total number, total number for periods going back, that's a great question. Could, I mean, if it was fifteen thousand, green doesn't mean anything, right?
Right. Yes.
I have some figures that came from BOLI, the Business Alliance for Local Living Economies, and while the total employment there for Brattleboro in two thousand and seven was ten thousand something, they have a figure that said in two thousand and eight, the number of employees in Wyndham County as a whole was twenty-two thousand, and the self-employed was nearly five thousand, and so that's a whole other category that this, the best five thousand.
Does not show.
Doesn't really include, and that.
I, I know that.
Almost a quarter of a county's population are self-employed.
But, Brattleboro is a significant percentage of the Wyndham County labor force.
Yes.
You're, you carry a huge portion of the, the whole county. Yes?
I just wanted to point, point out an observation, sort of an overlay on this. If you think about the potential average wage of these different categories, these things, as they go up and down, might not also reflect prosperity. If you're losing high-paying jobs in manufacturing and gaining lower-paying jobs in something else, that may mean as a region that you may not be as prosperous, even if the number of jobs stays the same or grows. But, if you're moving them all over to low wages, Walmart jobs, that's not necessarily a, a good thing.
Because this was, is predominantly land use, request to look at land uses and what's, our focus is on uses, more than is on the people.
Yeah.
But, that obviously begs the next question, which is, what's the effect of, on average wages, healthcare coverage, those sort of things? I think that's probably going to be something we're going to pour in that pot when we come out and say, here's what the numbers in total tell us, but that would, that would be a concern I have, is that you, you replace jobs, maybe almost over one, but have you replacement the same earning level, or same earning plus benefit?
I'm going to move on quickly, because I, I appreciate all your questions, and if you have some burning ones, please raise your hand, but I'm going way over what I'd hoped to do for just presenting this material, because I want to get some good dialogue going after we get through this data dump, if you want to call it that, so we can talk about what all, what you think all this means. So, as I did with numbers of business establishments, this is employment, looking at some of the major ones, and just giving you a visual comparison of communities that gained and lost. Manufacturing, as we saw, is down on a lot of these. Lebanon was the only one that was up.
I don't know that this reflect, anybody want to guess what Lebanon is? Paper third, I don't know. Paper third meant about eight hundred jobs on in the last ten percent.
Yeah.
And I don't know anybody else.
And, and Centerra Park was, was growing like crazy during that decade, so.
It's a very.
Retail, retail trade, Keene, Greenfield, Lebanon grew, Brattleboro, North Hampton, Wyndham County, didn't. Professional, scientific, they're all up. You're up, in terms of numbers of employees at least, you're one of the top three.
Percentage is not.
Right. Yes. Percentage change. Healthcare and social assistance, Lebanon was high. I think that's obviously driven by Hitchcock Hospital. Brattleboro and the rest of the county did very well as well.
There's no healthcare in Greenfield?
Apparently not. It's, I think it's just a hospital, or maybe two, again, two, few establishments. Hotels and restaurants. Hotels and restaurants, percentage wise, you guys are doing great.
Again, those are almost high-paying jobs.
No. All right, here we go to total sales. This is actually, this is what these, again, covered employment businesses, the ones that are paying into unemployment insurance. So we're limited by that data deficiency, but for the ones that did report, what were the changes in sales between nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and seven? Manufacturing in Brattleboro was down thirty percent. All the other jurisdictions except for Wyndham County, which we don't have a number on, were up. Retail trade was up.
So, so now you've caught up with your last two questions about the whole retail. First was the down, you lost companies and you lost employees, but you've increased sales. Well, that tells you something about, perhaps about consolidation or, the next question.
So we're, we're, we're missing, there's a lot of blanks on this one again, but for the ones that you see, well, there's two factors going on here. One is potential consolidation, the other is just plain old inflation. Nineteen ninety-seven dollars aren't as much as two thousand and seven, so just inflation alone, you should see some increases. So it's mostly going to be positive and my point is that what you're seeing is that there, there is growth in terms of total sales in all of these categories, almost all these categories. Yes?
So do the sales reflect all retail trade, unlike the?
All businesses, not even retail.
Okay.
I mean, look at all the categories.
Well, I'm, I'm looking, I'm thinking about the, the likely businesses that aren't necessarily included in those employment statistics, meaning the small shops.
Right.
Retail shops that are, you know, so that their business is reflected in here, but their employment statistics are not reflected?
Their sales numbers are not in here either.
You're either in or you're not.
This, this.
So that's what I'm asking.
This, it's the same, it's the same data set. This does not include the small businesses that don't contribute to unemployment insurance. The only way I can get that, and I, and I can do this for you guys, I can't do it for New Hampshire because they don't have it, is look at the state revenue numbers for sales tax. And I can do that for Brattleboro and the county and for Franklin County in Massachusetts. I can't do it for New Hampshire because they don't collect the data because they don't have a sales tax.
Will that you see any, Rematcha income taxes by?
I, I'm not sure. Yep.
So just looking at that slide at a glance would suggest that in all these areas, in every single sector, sales have increased from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and seven.
Sales in dollars.
Sales in dollars. So which, which has to mean that, as you're beginning to point out, that really maybe has mainly to do with these numbers not being adjusted for inflation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If they're not adjusted for inflation, then anything that's below probably twenty-seven percent.
Would be red instead of green.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
This cumulatively, between ninety-seven and two thousand and seven, it was about twenty, you know, it's about two point five, three percent annually over that period, so.
In fact, we could put a filter on that to redo this chart to show it discounting for inflation.
So anything under twenty percent would be a concern.
Yeah.
And anything probably up to sixty percent is not really fabulous.
Right.
And, and they have the same point of view, I mean, go look at Lebanon for percent increase.
Right. So yeah, would you actually see in Lebanon really color?
And, I don't know, I'm interested about why that is. Nine hundred and forty-four for Wyndham County? The balance of Wyndham County? I'm surprised.
Grace Cottage Hospital, I think, very.
Oh, is that it? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, this, this other factor is better.
This has also been a period of a lot of the dock in the box facilities growing, offices, the professional medical buildings. You'll see that in the state of Texas.
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm taking a great leap of faith here. This is, I've never quite done this particular statistic before because it's a little weird, but I've taken all of those numbers that we've looked at before, numbers of businesses, employment and sales, and added them together to say, what does that mean? And because, you know, there were differences. You look at the, all right, so what if we lost five businesses, but how many employees did we lose? Well, so what if we lost fifteen employees? How much money did we make or lose? So I added those all together and came up with a composite figure that tries to look at where you've got pluses and minuses in comparison to these other jurisdictions. And this is the result of that analysis. And I don't want to focus on this one too much, but you can see that it's largely positive. And go to the next slide, Stu. Now I've taken the median, the middle number for all of these data sets for each industrial category, and let's take administrative and support functions. The median number was seventy percent. Those communities that were higher than the median are green, those that are below that number are red. So you're starting to see a picture about combining all three of those categories where that community's strong industry categories are and their weak ones are compared to the surrounding economic region. Yep?
And what did you actually add, the percent changes in the three?
Simple percent addition. But it's, again, this is, this whole discussion is really about just giving you a sense of where you stand in relation to the other people, the other communities, excuse me, in your economic sphere. Yeah?
And just say that mathematically, a more realistic way to do that would be to factor the three together and then, then multiply that number by three.
Okay.
And then it would, a number, each one of those values would relate to each other better.
Yeah.
The manufacturing would relate to retail trade, whereas right now it doesn't, it only relates to other communities.
Yeah. So, and, and I thought about this a lot. I, I thought about trying to weight it and do some different factors and I said, you know, by the time you're done, what we're trying to show is trends within the economic region. So what you're seeing is that for Brattleboro, compared to the other jurisdictions that we're looking at in this comparison, you are strong in professional scientific services, administrative and support, educational is not as strong because the median's a hundred and eighty-one, healthcare is good, arts and entertainment is white because it's pretty much right on, it's very close to the median number, so the few white ones are median numbers. Combination of food services, you're doing very well, and this other elusive miscellaneous category. Okay, so what are the implications for Brattleboro with all of this numbers, all of these numbers? And it's, you've raised a lot of good questions. Anytime you look at numbers like this, you can analyze the heck out of it. And again, I asked you to think about the trends that we're showing here and what it all means. And what these numbers said to me was that manufacturing, retail trade, education are going to have been flat unless something changed, will probably stay fairly flat with low population growth both regionally and nationally. Next, Stu?
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yep.
No, with education, you know, we have kind of destination educational establishments and, you know, whether it's SIT or Marlo, Marlo Grad Center, I mean, things could happen with those that really aren't related to the local population. Is that, is that?
The, again, the focus of what we're trying to do here is say, remember the context of this whole conversation? The validity of the commercial district plans that you have developed in this community. This is not an economic analysis to say where Brattleboro should be in ten years with X, Y and Z industrial classification categories.
Last meeting I was in, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. It's really all about where your land use policy wants to be going. And what we're trying to do is say, where do we see decline, stagnation or growth?
By the way, it's not, it's really, the longer title of this would be implication for Brattleboro if you don't do anything differently.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, good point.
You can certainly adjust this up or down if you see something you like or don't like.
This is not taking economic development into account.
It's just for checking.
This is, this is what is, not what you want to do. So healthcare office uses, there are a whole bunch of categories that were professional scientific, administrative support, a bunch of other categories that were essentially office functions. And as somebody said, they're service oriented businesses. Those are largely office uses. Food and lodging, which relates to both your local audience as well as travelers that are going into and through the town, have been stronger than your competition surrounding region. Stu?
And we'll talk a minute about we get to what we want to see happen, but if anyone can crystal ball out the next five, ten years what's going to happen in healthcare, you should be, you should be selling your services somewhere because I'd really like to know that. Office use numbers nationally are going down for employee for a couple of reasons. One, just to save costs, so people are office sharing and other things, more telecommunication. Most metropolitan areas have a five and ten year surplus of existing office space, so the odds of seeing a lot of non-medical office use are lower than they would have been, say, ten years ago when offices was growing. So those are some of the national things we'll kick around as we talk about what should we do next.
And that's exaggerated even further by the downturn we've had in the last couple of years. So, so what are the commercial district impacts of all this discussion? Again, not taking into account any, any active agendas that the town may want to take on, but just saying based on what trends we've seen in the recent past. Canal Street, obviously the hospital's there, so you've got medical neighborhood convenience needs, some traveler services, and maybe some medical professional offices that can relate to what those functions are doing. Next.
Roger, that is what is, or is that what the land use says should be?
That's what is, plus looking at what we just saw and saying what?
But this is not a land use analysis, this is still what's going on in the real world.
Right. West Brattleboro, neighborhood conveniences, limited traveler services, I don't think there's any change from what the plan talked about based on the demographics and the economic numbers that we just looked at. Putney Road, general retail's still going to be there. I think you're probably looking at more opportunities in mixed use, not just retail, but service, office, and as the plan talked about, some residential uses, and I think the land use mix and how you do that is something we're going to have to sort through.
And one of the interesting phenomenas of the term mixed use is that for years, if you look at retail office residential, it was mixed use and it typically meant distinct features within an area. So there was your office building, there was your retail building, and there was your residential building. It might be in the same kind of area, but now one more interesting phenomenon is, is buildings that have all three of those within the same building.
Right.
So you have the retail office, and I live above my office, and it's, offices, there are offices that make sound, but some people go, why would I want to do that? Especially with more internet-based businesses and such that, I worked with a company that does, it's an internet service provider in Manhattan, it's one of the bigger ones, and he said, I would, I'll buy apartments for my guys who are technicians if they'll live near the servers. Because he needs to get someone to a server in fifteen, twenty minutes if he can do it. If you take in the work style, the hours, a lot of the more internet-based people, they're certainly not nine to five, so that the, the mixed use vision is not the same mixed use you might have had twenty years ago, where you're talking about, here's a big office park and the apartments are across the street, and that is actually where the things are. You're, in many ways, recreating village again, where you, you live, shop and work all within a.
It's, it's what you have in downtown. It's, and, and the, the classic, and I shouldn't say the classic, the recent bad planning model that us planners foisted upon the American public in the last half century was separate those land uses, put the industry over there, the retail, the houses, and you never want to mix them up. And we've learned that that was probably not a very good decision that was made. What you have in downtown Brattleboro, where you've got buildings with multiple uses and buildings right next to each other and all that stuff, in many instances makes a lot more sense than separating all of those uses all the time. There are certainly places where you want industrial parks that are doing noisy, smelly things, but to separate your retail from your residential, at least by very much, is not a good thing because people have to travel farther, it's less convenient, and it, it just doesn't work for people anymore. You had a question?
This is commercial district impact, I'm sorry, I think you just answered this, but I'm confused. Is it, so is this a description of what these are right now?
This is, this was my sense, and I'm going to ask you for, to react to what I've written here. This is my sense of what you said in the corridor plans that you developed over the last ten years for Canal Street, West Brattleboro, Putney Road, and my sense of what's going on in downtown, and overlaying that with all the data that I just threw at you.
But current?
Based on current trends and conditions.
This is real, not the land uses. This is your observation of.
Right.
Market, market trends, not land use designations.
Right. Next. And finally downtown, again, mixed use, more focus on professional offices based on the information that we saw. Retail is still going to be important. Big caveat, as several of you have said, we're not taking into account the one and two-person businesses that don't end up in the, that whole database system, and I know that makes up a probably significant percentage of your downtown business base. Next.
And one of the things we want to hear from you is, should, should downtown be also looking for more of a focus on professional office and residential?
I, I.
Because there is, yeah, we talked about earlier, there's clearly a trend, we didn't see it in the numbers here, but clearly a trend in, in livable towns, livable communities.
That's what that is, right there. Mixed use.
To have quality in-town housing, where, again, the model of the last twenty, thirty years is that you lived in town means you couldn't get a house someplace else. Now a lot of people are saying, I really want to be in town, I want to be close to things, I want to be around, I don't want to have to have three cars and such. So the issue to hear from you about what, what kind of opportunities you might see there.
Well, the trend is by all accounts is that they convert it into residential now.
Yeah.
First, but fourth is by all accounts. About fourth.
I mean, it depends on, it depends on the building. I mean, there are some buildings that are still, you know, have a lot of professional offices, but there, there are several buildings which have taken what used to be office space and turned them into residential.
And that's market rate residential?
Yeah.
Rental more than ownership?
Rental, rental.
Okay, that's the, that's the trend now versus, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm talking, that was misunderstood. I mean, it's a getting, that might be that is the strength of the, of the office market, more than, more than the developed, more than a increase in residential market.
It gives you some sense that it's not a, it's not going to make people where the office market dropped then because you have all these empty offices. If they're being used for something else, they'll hopefully stabilize the rents for the remaining offices to some degree. But again, it's not a rush to say that you've been town and do, nah, not yet. Not yet.
There does seem to be some movement, particularly by boomers and those that are older, to move downtown, to be close to services, to, you know, from, from farther out, and so there, there is a little bit of that going on, and I don't expect that to decrease.
And maybe we'll talk from that too also about if, if your higher education, private schools are driving that too because they've become real residential next to you. Go behind the camera.
Can we try and tackle this first question and keep it, I mean, I don't want to limit your thinking, but stay a little bit organized if we can. What's your reaction to the first question? Yep?
My personal perspective, having worked in San Francisco and New York in the, in technology, that I think it's a unique town for attracting people in cities, won't have kids, continue to work for a company anywhere in the world, buy a house reasonably, walk to somewhere like the co-op and have a lot of unusual high levels of art and excellent public schools, low, low housing for someone making pretty good money, you know, city money.
So can we say high quality of life?
Very. And I think the challenge for attracting people like that, it's like a bedroom community for the virtual world in a way, is, is first of all, good infrastructure, bandwidth, office space that's flexible with housing, but walking over half a mile is very within this kind of lifestyle.
Can you just identify who that, who that is?
I don't, well, it's like if you got a Google satellite office here.
So I'm sorry, who is that population cohort you're talking about? Give me some descriptions, age?
Oh, twenty, twenties. Oh, 20s, 20s, a lot of them, I'd say 30s and 40s, tired of the cities, wanna have, wanna remain working for their company, can convince them to get a satellite office or let them work remotely and go to New York every once in a while.
And that, that's, I should point out, that's a trend that is growing, seems to be growing all across the country, where people are commuting electronically.
Can we do a survey in the room? How many people do that?
Do what? Do walking?
For remotely for a company that is-
How it communicates something regarding your-
Yeah, is, that is, that is not necessarily serving people in Brattleboro.
Hands again. Two, three. Okay.
And then all I would say is, where, I think the struggle there is to convert a town from the industrial age to the service economy by trying to get, you know, kayak rentals on the river and maybe condos where the lumber company is, because it's got a little babbling broken, you go off to the Co-op and live above where your offices are below. And we have with our schools, we're starting to be able to train people to work in technology and profits business, you know, you can provide some, some employees.
So, one suggestion is where is, is from this cohort, of the earlier life cycle, kids are younger, if there are kids, probably a little, education's probably a little higher, a little technology, a connection to an urban area, things like natural ac, access to natural creatures, good schools, strong IT broadband, arts, interesting things, so you get some of the urban lifestyle without doing the New York City shtick. So-
I don't think it's a magic bullet, I just think it's something that is unique about this town, and in terms of attraction.
And if, if you look at the entrepreneurial strategy, which is something one you can do, that doesn't require a lot of building to have it, that's the description of that, this is where a lot of new companies are launched, a lot of new virtual companies are launched, it's a low physical impact, because they're not building big buildings, they're not, you know, bringing tractor-trailer trucks through to push their products in and out. This is where a lot of innovation comes from, creative arts, that, so it's a, it's a, it's probably, a couple of people are mentioning, this is probably pretty strong today, it's just not necessarily very well measured, or we've seen because of the COVID employment area.
Yeah.
Roger, you need a-
Yeah, I, I, I think there's another demographic of the early retiree, I have met three since January who did not know Brattleboro as they were starting to look for a place in early and, and fairly comfortable retirement, choosing, and you, and on the basis of visits to Brattleboro, and one was looking nationally, one was looking regionally, chose Brattleboro simply because of the charm, the integrity of the town, the diversity of the, of the arts, and simply said, we thought Brattleboro was just the greatest place, and, and these are all in the early traveling.
How they found housing?
One, one had temporarily DC and then was up in Vermont and was, was staying in Woodstock, but Woodstock, although pretty, was too small and narrow and confined in further, and, and Brattleboro just answered what she was looking for. And similarly, two who were really able to travel regionally and nationally, in the back of their mind, where are we gonna settle? And Brattleboro was where they decided. And, and so I think that's a, that's another demographic.
Two, two questions, one, how they found their housing costs, versus what other places they were looking at, good, bad, and different housing effects?
Well, two have bought, so-
Houses, houses standing?
Yeah, that met their need, and they said they were, it was, the, the prices were at their, their high end, but they met them, and the, and the other one is looking.
Okay, and how about the feeling toward healthcare? Is that this-
I didn't come up in conversation, so, but I don't think we, I don't think healthcare is something we have to worry about, we're extremely well situated for healthcare in this town.
This, this market could look down that road, so that's a good-
Yeah, but, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
If you wanna look at whether, where we're going from here, you need some, and you're talking about validity of planning, you need some valid economic data from 2007 to 2011. And as Peter brought up, one of the, one often and very effective way is one-on-one anecdotal interviews. There's about five other things that need to be done, including, you need simple paper and pencil in-person survey, you need a Survey Monkey, online survey, you need descriptive analysis of what are your, where are your revenues coming from, and where your expenses are going, a descriptive analysis of products purchased and services purchased. And you need an open-ended item to gather feel of the doing work, that descriptive analysis is taking something and brainstorming like we're doing here, breaking categories that are important, and then we really start to get where we're going.
Yeah, and-
And that can be done in a matter of about a month.
And my guess is that the people who really wanna do that are certainly this, and increasingly these people are just like that question. Other, other sources?
There might be, as we move toward a greater economy, there's new, new technologies that are coming forward, repurposing of recycled materials, solar, wind, things, and there are people who, we have some kind of quasi-industrial commercial space in town that could be reused for that, I don't know how to attract those people here, I know a couple of people who've come back here and set up their own solar businesses, but that's a whole other economic growth that's really with the times and is only gonna get bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
And not, and in certain areas in California, they have a big enough population so that when their recycled materials come in, they have a processing plant right there that re, that takes all the milk jugs and re-molds them into new something, and another industry that does the cans, and so it's keeping all that waste right there and repurposing it to go back out into that same geographic area, and there's no reason why we couldn't create something like that here.
And clearly a, a Vermont location doesn't hurt you if you were trying to nationally, internationally sell those kind of services. So we have three categories, it's gonna give you a couple more categories, because we're gonna get back to how do we attract it and where we put it too, so be thinking where we're gonna, how do we put these-
I have another one, but it, it never showed big on your, on your economic, on those pie charts you have there, but it's agriculture and value-added products, and the town of Hardwood, Vermont is one that comes to mind, it's where they're finding around, through agriculture, and we're always gonna need food, no matter how high the price of oil does and gasoline and whatever kind of natural disasters that follows, we're always gonna need food, we need to be, there's a lot of people in this area already thinking how do we create better food consistency in, in food hubs, but I, I think that's a, and we're beginning to put that into the career center programs and whatnot, but that, even though it only showed up as a small sliver on your chart, I, I think there's a potential there.
And, and that's why looking backwards isn't necessarily gonna tell you where you're gonna go.
That's right.
And in addition to, it's also a health issue.
Yes.
And now if you flip back to the two demographics, that younger demographic is very interested in the health thing, as is the 55s.
That's right, it was a great-
So you're actually bringing a market in to absorb some of that.
Yeah, and young people are interested in that kind of revival of the 70s, kinda back to the land, but also retirees, everybody's kinda, it's on their radar, and so farms would go under there, too, small farms, gardens, kind of thing.
Right. And back-
Markets, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I have two thoughts. Is it, might it be useful to look at some of the significant recent development, and like maybe that's the beginning of some trends, or maybe there's something to see there, like for instance, this Commonwealth theory? What are, what are the, you know, that's a big new business all of a sudden in town, so what, what sort of groups does that represent, or what categories does that represent?
Can you describe it quickly?
Can I?
What's it, what's-
No, I don't know, I don't know what that is.
Yogurt factory?
It's a, it's a yogurt factory.
It's a value-added dairy.
It's an international company.
Yeah. It employs 25 people, Stu, and I can't remember how many cups, which is the measure of yogurt that's gonna produce, but I think at full capacity, it'll count for about 3% of the state's milk, raw milk, so-
It adds to the-
Pretty substantial.
Just a quick story about that, what's the, the Greek yogurt that's-
Friends of ours live in New York State very near where they bought this big dairy
facility, and four years ago, and everybody said, what a stupid idea this is, and now they've outgrown the facility twice, and they're just going nuts trying to find production facilities and such.
Right.
When I was working in the state of New Hampshire, we did a lot of work with Stony Field, and Stony Field has helped a little bit, it's kept caught up in the last couple of years, a lot of its organic milk comes from organic milk powder from New Zealand because they've stacked up everything on these coasts, that's how, how much the demand has gone up, more than people thought. And that same thing, go to any market, get shaws, and look at the number of yogurt flavors companies, it's quite astounding, so if I could make it, these are kind of linked?
Yes.
But this is, this is real business now, this is not just someone making three tubs of goat chum and so on.
Maybe they're linked, and, but maybe there's another factor that, that we can identify about this place in particular, or about the kinds of places that we think may fall into this category, that's the most relevant one. I, I have in mind that if you're a business that exists elsewhere, and you're looking around, say, in this general region for where you're gonna set up your plant or your offices, to not set up in New Hampshire and set up over here, there has to be something that makes you want to set up over here and then overcome some of the incentives that exist to, to set up close by.
Yeah.
And I, I, maybe I'm going off on a run, on a total tangent, but it seems to me like maybe it's almost like a philosophical or political kind of-
The Vermont brand.
I'm sorry.
Vermont has a brand.
Maybe, but, but I think everybody thinks they have the brand, like New Hampshire thinks they have the brand also.
You're not off the, you're not off the track, but you're, you're ahead of us, because we're gonna come back and talk about how, if we could focus this on all of it, and then we'll say, identify some markets.
So I was gonna, I define this, a third group this way, as maybe businesses that are kind of philosophically or politically in tune with something that defines this region and is distinct from other, other vibrant-
Yeah, good point. Yes.
I think that an important factor that connects every one of these groups that we've talked about so far is there are people coming from outside and joining, coming to Brattleboro because of something, and it doesn't include essentially the people who are educating in those top-notch schools and are, you know, becoming, you know, disenchanted 20-somethings and having to move somewhere else.
So to, to reverse that statement, the market that we might wanna get growth coming from is by retaining-
Yes, retaining, retaining our, our natural capital.
Younger, yeah, okay. So retention of-
Current population.
And I know I'm, I'm abbreviating everybody, but I just wanna make sure we get, see if that's some people patiently, sorry.
Have you looked at traffic counts? I heard, I figured this morning that U9, West Brattleboro, traffic over 10 years has increased about 10%, and that might relate to economic growth, you know, how to tap into that increase in traffic, that's traffic from out of state, kind of regions coming in, passing through, and how to tap into that, partly through traveler's services, but I know that the arts community in West, in, in West Brattleboro is also interested in how to tap into that.
So, getting traffic to stick.
Right.
I'm over simplifying everything, but to some degree, the traffic coming through, you want them to either empty their wallet a little bit, or invest in the town, or buy an apartment building and fix it up or something, so-
That's it, yeah.
Do something with the people-
Yeah, I was thinking more narrowly when I brought it up, you know, the people actually passing through, you know, how to, how to get more of their dollars locally. But you know, things you brought up for balance, too?
And I'm, I'm just gonna call it stick, because it's just a term people use about, one of the New England phenomenas of small towns, a lot of them have a major highway go through it, and Brattleboro is either blessed or not by having the interstate go by it, but I've worked with a couple of towns that, a major road goes straight through town, and you go, oh, look at all this traffic, isn't this great? None of them stop, because I wanna either get to work, or I wanna get home. And what it does is actually chases people away who would otherwise come in because they go, oh, I can't get a parking space, or I can't take a left-hand turn or something. So there's some real interesting issues about how to use traffic to slow, Roger's mentioning some things of calming, traffic calming and stuff, and how do you, so, but I'm just gonna call it stick, if everybody kinda understands, have their money stick or have their investment stick, or something.
Roger, about this group, Roger?
There will probably be, broken the arts, because there's already a very strong cluster in Brattleboro, and artists probably more than any other sector clustered within itself and, and draws for the cluster.
And, and just like any business, there's subcategories here, there's the, you know, a little bit of a hobby versus even to a very international, web-based business, so, but the idea of, if I go to Brattleboro, I can maybe find two or three or four of these, and it, maybe it's worth stopping there because there's enough of a nucleus that it's worth stopping there versus driving all the way to Woodstock or something else. So is that, is that enough description for now?
Yeah, well, there's a difference there with, I think with what you're saying of spectating and, and the working environment, so I think there's both. I think there's the stick that you're talking about of the arts that are here that are worth visiting, but then there's also the working artist, and I think that population will increase due to this clustering phenomenon.
And that person may or may not be performing for, creating for a population here, they might be a-
Probably not.
Okay, so you may not even know they're there other than, or you may not-
The, the industry.
Gotcha, good point, okay.
We're a region already with a lot of very creative self-employed people who are kind of entrepreneurial types, and our economic development does lie on that, and is there a way to grow that more and more, to attract those more, and how do we do that? You know, kind of more local-based, small, local-based businesses, and maybe the incentives tend to, with government, with tax base, give, give the incentives to a big business if a big company comes in, but what are the incentives for smaller companies or even small businesses, both of those? And that's, I think, a theory that we really need to look at when we, how do we support those?
Yeah, and by the way, some of these we've hit, you could be in more than one, obviously, you could be 55 in here and make, okay. If I could split this for you a little bit, because I, people hear about self-employed, an overgeneralization, or there are, there are small companies, self-employed people who are doing innovative things that potentially have growth, software, distribution, things like that, and then there's people who are making a lifestyle business, I'm running a B&amp;B, I'm running a, and it's wonderful, and they're creating taxes, but, you know, they're not gonna go from two people to 20 people to 200 people. So that's why I'm making a little bit of a split there, because the policies are different. And remember, we're gonna find a place to put all these people, so where are we gonna put that dairy farm, where are we gonna, where are we gonna put the yogurt? That's where the land use stuff comes in. Sir?
I can think of some existing businesses or sectors, you know, the lumber process and stuff.
Good, 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 good.
Old, steady one, and I think it should be supported, or seems true with the high-tech manufacturing, the lenses and the precision and stuff, these companies are loyal to the area, they've stuck it out, they can be supported, those are basic economic drivers. And then there's a few sort of future-looking industries that I'd like to see rooted, the sort of capital insurance sort of finance.
Before you go, is lumber harvesting, milling, kilning, all the above?
All the above.
But no furniture, I heard earlier, it's not like a-
No, that's a, that's a bygone industry that could be rekindled, but-
Okay, but this is, this is harvesting end of it, not the-
Process, the processing process.
Okay, okay. And then precision optical, people are making lens equipments for-
And then, and the sort of precision manufacturing, the sort of high-tech machining.
Gotcha.
There's a few of these industries in town that have survived and that need support.
By the way, there's a ton of work for some of these smaller shops coming out of some of the defense world these days.
Exactly.
It's just there's a sort of a dance we have to do to help them connect because it's a...
And, you know, I think...
And you had one other one.
I think the environment, the attractive environment, we get highly educated, young people who are about to move to a place. But the, you know, the captive insurance and sort of finance sector is something that's kind of bypassed our town. And it's an asset the state provides. It is a unique feature of Vermont that has brought a lot of money to the...
But not many jobs, right?
No.
Isn't it pretty much just you just...
It's totally focused on building.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's a way of incorporating, but typically they hire an attorney to represent them and that's... Less has changed a lot since then. But the finance piece is also very, I mean, the big financial guys are maybe not growing, but community banks are doing quite well right now, so.
And the last one is the, you know, I think of the, I think of some of the surrounding towns or the prosperous towns is the higher education piece. You know, we have SIT and Marwood College, but, you know, I think we're like, we said something like we're the nicest university town around. So anything to encourage that, sort of higher...
Yeah, there's some undergrads here downtown.
Yeah. Some youth there.
So grow higher ed that's already here and attract those, okay.
Support it, attract it.
Yeah.
I strongly suspect that most of the future new businesses coming in are going to be niche businesses. And this is all with due respect to what this gentleman was just talking about, he was talking about supporting some of the older businesses that have done well and grown, improving themselves by having grown so substantially. But the new businesses, I think, are going to be niche businesses. We have a brand-new factory that employs all 25 people, not hundreds. There's a kind of an irony here, and that is that the niche business is one that doesn't tolerate a lot of competition. People come here and they can form a business in a niche, but you wouldn't want to expect, you would not expect that that would grow even further. You know, if somebody opens up a specialty gastroenterology practice, it would be because there isn't one here already. So why would somebody come and do that? There's one oral surgery practice, we're not going to expect to see another. So it's little niches that I suspect are going to be where the growth comes from here on in.
So they're getting...
And just if I might just add, while I've got before, just very briefly, nobody's said a word about taxes and the tax rate. And that may be why we could expect the little self-employed, little professional businesses to do better than something that is going to be subject to a lot of property tax.
I'm going to rephrase that because we're trying to...
Go ahead.
We're trying to say who and where. I would kind of rephrase that to tax tolerant.
Tax tolerant.
I don't know if that's a, you know, like lactose intolerant, whatever it is, but I mean, there's certain, again, I've worked at the recruiting before, and there's certain firms that there's guys that run in spreadsheets and if this is lower than this one, deal's done. I mean, they don't, you know, it's just all driven by numbers. You get to the other extreme, typically smaller, family-run or personally-run, taxes are important, but they're not perhaps the... So you, it depends on what industry, I mean, clearly, big-box retail is very tax intolerant. Other things where it's part of a whole package. So just businesses are, I'm going to, sort of, tax tolerant if I'm going to make up that term, if that's okay.
Sure.
I kind of hesitate to advertise that we want tax-tolerant towns, it sort of sounds like, we're going to raise them up even higher because you like them, but it's, everybody kind of knows what I'm saying, right? Okay. Couple more, then we'll let Roger talk about where we put them.
Yeah.
Roger? Any... Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of potential in the possibility of the value-added food products was mentioned, but there's also a potential for actual local product production. There's a desire for that, certainly a big trend toward localization. And, you know, there's a potential for that and could create a lot of economic development. There's a potential for recycling recyclable materials into products and doing it locally as opposed to shipping it across. And there's also, there's also a potential for sustainable agricultural research. We've got one facility in Carbon Harvest, which is moving to the Williams District property. But there's also a lot of other things that go on through the Vermont Extension on farms and doing a lot of things. And that, you know, all of these things that we're talking about also creates a potential for, you know, increased tourism around all of those things. If you've got a green technology cluster, you can bring people in from around the world and say, hey, this is what we're doing. And that's a little different than the recreational tourism where people are coming and not spending huge amounts of money. You know, I think there is a potential for the possibility of green technology research if we do it, especially if it's supported by an educational program, which would be great if we could do something like that.
By the way, notice we're on page four and that's the first time someone's mentioned tourism.
I missed it.
You did, I'm good. Did I miss it?
Just to be conscious at the time...
Second person, okay.
We need to wrap this piece of conversation up and then start answering this last question.
If I missed your tourism, why don't you take a shot?
The aging of population, although it's a problem in some ways, is also an economic opportunity. You reflect on money and healthcare and stuff like that.
We've really, I don't think we've mentioned healthcare, have we? It's a growth, shouldn't that be there? Senior care facilities, especially market ones, are a dream come true for tax base. They pay a lot of tax base, they have zero services, nobody complains about the noise, I mean, and they have almost a guaranteed, you know, throughput, so.
Terrible, Stu, you're getting up there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Too market-driven here, too market-driven. One or two more, then we're going to let Roger get us... Yes, ma'am, you were very patient.
Well, to build on that tourism, I think we should reclaim what our growth always contains the value for. We have such an incredible location, considering everything in Vermont, and we have three exits off of...
Location for who is it important to? It's obvious to you, but say the rest, that's... We have a great location for...
For visiting.
From...
From anywhere.
Well, not California, any better than...
Well, Boston, New York.
Boston, New York, Springfield, Hartford...
Montreal.
Yeah, that 91-ish car, okay.
Montreal.
I just want to make that distinction, okay.
Well, I was going to be more specific, but we could begin by being more friendly and more desirable as you come in to the different ways that you come into Brattleboro. Having more of a definition when people come in, signs, signage. And then really building on a railroad as we come in, where we're the first stop into the state of Vermont. But that would mean that we would also have to connect with other situation when people come, because we'd be getting people saved from New York and they would be hit with a car. So we'd have to make sure that they were set up with others, a rental or D-MET or a bike or something like that. But we could certainly do a better job of when they first come through town, of the whole look here. And that could be very short-term. And I would really like to see that there's something on a weekend that's open downtown, sort of like an internet cafe, information center, that when people come and they're walking around town, and many of us have seen these people and go, hey, this town looks cool. Hey, what's going on? Maybe I could, maybe I could live here, I'd like to find out more. Maybe I could bring my little business, I want to get out of that little suburb I'm down in New York. And they're able to come in and there's a friendly face there and telling them and putting them together with real estate people and businesses and stuff, because that doesn't exist.
Here, I want to make sure I got the corridor right. And the gentleman behind you said Montreal, so if I said New York, Hartford, Springfield, Montreal, that's kind of, am I getting the...
Boston. Yeah, but you know, we even, we're a quick two hours to Bradley Airport in Connecticut, and they've even got international...
That's why I'm saying Hartford, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, so what I'm saying is Europe is...
Is it an area of...
Yeah.
Those discount old...
Right, so a little bit west, too, okay.
You have an answer to the last question?
Okay, last comment, and then we got to go.
Recreation, it hasn't been mentioned, and there is just such a huge potential for recreational opportunities. We've got a lot of outdoor stuff, but there's, I mean, there are so many, there are so many things that could be done recreationally and actually would enhance our economic opportunities for businesses coming in because there's a lot of things that were missing. Recreational-based businesses, you know, extreme sports places.
So...
There's just a lot more, there's a lot of potential there, I think.
And it certainly fits the, again, the brand, the mountains, Vermont, the, you know, the...
It's just promoting...
You think that's where a lot of the ski companies have come from, the hiking boots, the snowshoes, the unfortunate lot of them then move off, but that's life, so.
I think when we look at the different districts in town in terms of where do we put it, the King Putney Road has a great capacity to still be built out. It has some areas, it's been put into a lot of different, broken up into a lot of different zoning districts.
I could go right here.
If it was put back into a more mixed use for the whole thing, because there's areas there where some of these kind of commercial businesses have developed and room there for that kind of stuff.
Roger, if I go flip through these, do you have a map, do you have a map of, a slide of the four areas, just in case anyone has any question where they are?
No, I don't.
Do you have a list of them, so I can know? Go back maybe. What I want to do is maybe just go through and then kind of just give me a sense of where you think this fits as far as any of those four areas. Is that fair?
When you, you could, you want to build a quick matrix? Yeah, we can do it here.
I can do it here? I was just going to write on here as we flip through them, so. Go to it, Roger, okay.
You want to get back over this?
I just wanted to say, now we've said where, and we're jumping over how because that's a whole other conversation. If we bring these in, where do we, what's the appropriate...
Just use letters.
Yeah, it's called a letter.
Canal.
Yeah. C, D, T, W, P, D.
Putney and B for down.
And the catch is, though, you can't do more than two.
Right.
And we don't put four every time, you know, put them here, all four, so.
Some of them might be... Like, some of these coastal businesses in the category, why...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, some of them are not, some of them could be anywhere or everywhere or nowhere.
We're trying to get a sense of appropriateness for...
Right, but some of them might...
Gotcha, get away. Yep.
I think this is putting the cart before the horse. What you need to do first is you need to look at the businesses that have recently come and asked, like all these people, and what Danny was saying was not, I think his way has to be done first, which is that you have to ask the recent businesses, the yogurt companies and everybody else, why did you come to Brattleboro? Then you start doing this. And then you'll really get some meaning.
Yeah, I agree 100% when we're doing this one, when we're talking about how to do more of it.
Yeah.
I think what Rod wants to find out is, as he's trying to, as a planner with land uses, saying, what should these four respective neighborhoods look like? Part of that is what should be allowed, what shouldn't be allowed. So that's why I'm kind of...
Would we solve that in five minutes, finish this, to cover all the property, to cover what was on the agenda?
Well, let me just put it in these terms, perhaps. We spent a lot of time on these first two questions, which have merged. One of the key functions of this work that's going to feed into the land use chapter of the town plan is to really look at the four existing commercial districts that we have. So that's Canal Street, West Brattleboro, Downtown, and Putney Road. And what we need to know include things such as, does the existing market and the market that we know or have a fairly strong idea will exist in the next five to 10 years be enough to support those commercial districts? In some ways, some of these categories, we actually have suspicion that we may not have enough to sustain them in their current configuration. If we're going to actually develop these areas, what do we think would fit, what's appropriate and what seems to fit with Brattleboro as a community and the way it expresses itself and what its preferences are? And how does that map on to the existing places that I just identified? Each of them has a distinctive character, right? And then we, if we, I mean, we may not get to it in five minutes, but I think that the further question that we want to develop here is, do we have too much of certain categories? And how are we going to overcome kind of the imbalance between supply and demand? We hear very clearly that most, many people in the room here feel that there are very, very small enterprises that are somehow not picked up in this data. What I'd say about that is, that's fine, and that's going to be difficult to resolve, and we've always known that's difficult to resolve. Setting that question aside, we've got some other questions that we need to ask and that we can still answer with the data that we've got. So if we go through this and look at where we're going to accommodate these, you know, these businesses or these things that we think are going to be the source of economic growth in a district sense, then we can start to talk more carefully about how we're going to plan those individual districts. The idea here ultimately also is to make sure that no one district is in conflict with another and all districts, all the non-Downtown districts complement and reinforce the downtown.
That's true. That's good.
Okay, so...
Isn't the business going to, this kind of poses a question too, how do I attract it? But isn't the business going to say, here, I'm coming here because of these specific qualities, okay, which may be in conflict with what you're trying to set up?
Sure. I mean, look, and then there's a couple of things here. We can't account for all the reasons why anyone would want to start their own business. And one of the things that we need to remember about small businesses, the ones that even start paying unemployment insurance, is that seven out of 10 small businesses fail within the first five years. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of churning in here and there's a lot of data that you need to be really careful with, and you don't want to necessarily jump to conclusions with a whole lot of this stuff. One of the reasons why we focus on something as big as and significant as the yogurt plant is that it is that size, it is that significant, it does mean something. The reason why they actually locate it where they locate it is complicated, but most of it has to do with the new market tax credit zone, which we didn't get on here, which is actually a very important locational factor.
Can you just say, just quickly, a little more about that? That sounds very interesting.
There's a, there's a, there's...
It's really part of this, the how.
It's the how, you know, and it's, that is a geographically specific thing. So for instance, while it might have been easier for them to locate their factory on Putney Road, that is not in the new market tax credit district where they are is. So they were able to attract substantial investment because of that, because of that exact street address, okay?
I think the issue about where is try to make sure that while change is happening, it's being done so that neighborhoods are comfortable what's going in on in their neighborhoods. So let me just pick one because it's on the front page. Let's say we all think this early retirement, I'll get you started. So it is one we want to make happen, but not my backyard. Put it to some other part of town. That's the sort of, or I like the idea of a yogurt thing, but I don't want anywhere near me, or I like the idea of recreational, but put it to somebody else. So it's your community, what Rod, his planning board are trying to do is put up districts that are accommodating what people want and that also are attractive for those areas so you have a good match between buyer and seller. And that we're not suggesting something go in a neighborhood that's just, what the heck do you encourage to come here for, it should have been Canal or something like that. So that's why the where question comes up after the what. I've got more questions than I started with.
So this gentleman right here is...
The statement you just made, Roger, is you talk about the four districts complementing each other and not being in conflict with each other.
Yeah.
That's something I almost disagree with. I mean, I'm quite strongly disagree with. I would expect there to be conflict between the areas. They don't necessarily all have to be supported.
Probably have any competition.
Yeah, I mean, the downtown is not, we're not, the three commercial districts are not here to support downtown. Downtown is an essential part of the town, but it's not dependent on the three commercial districts outside that have to support it. I would expect conflict. I mean, I want a butcher and a baker. I mean, I want a butcher and a baker up the north end, as well as downtown, as well as somewhere else. Or a canister maker, whoever is established with it. But, so when you talk about supporting without conflict, I, I don't see that as a premise for determining where these businesses are.
A key, a key attribute of the, of the Putney Road master plan is that at full buildout over a 50-year period, it would have a bigger residential population and more commercial and office and retail space than the entire downtown by a factor of about five. And so what we're trying to check here is whether that is A, realistic, B, feasible, and if it was to take place, what, if any negative consequences might that have on the downtown? So we wouldn't necessarily want to cannibalize downtown by developing Putney Road, right? And that's, I mean, I'm exaggerating, I'm exaggerating the contrast here, but that's exactly what I'm getting at. And so we also have very low levels of development and change. So, you know, you could support a butcher on West Brattleboro Downtown and on Putney Road that weren't part of supermarkets, that'd be great. I think they're about as likely as a candlestick maker.
Yeah, what, one of the things we have, oh, we've just done it, we've put North End butchers in.
Yeah, sure.
They didn't go downtown, and a classic tale, that would have gone downtown. Wouldn't that be wonderful, you know, the village concept, you put the butcher downtown, the baker.
Sure.
We had bakeries and bagel shops downtown, but we didn't get the butcher and the fish market. They went north to Putney Road.
Right.
But in other circumstances, they would naturally have sat downtown.
Yeah, I think.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we can talk about that part later, I guess.
As we, as we maybe roll out strategies as time goes on, I think one thing we want to suggest to you is that, that the markets are slightly different, and they ought to be thought of as slightly different, and reflected. Certain things, you can have five of them in town, and it would be great, five butcher shops, if that's what the neighborhood is. But think of a, of a large, you wouldn't want two hospitals, because clearly one of them is gonna just bleed from the other one. So there's certain things you want to make sure that you don't cannibalize yourself. And there's a whole different.
Would that be a land cost decision, or would that be a market decision? You know, is that something?
Well, you. We're, we're, we're relating, we're, we're testing the feasibility, we're testing the feasibility of the land use regulations that we've got by, by looking at what the key trends in the market are. So for instance, we don't think that there's gonna be a new bank branch, an office of a bank, built in Brattleboro anywhere in the, in the near future. Because we know that there's been enough of a shift in the way banking is done that it actually doesn't need to have a building anymore, okay? So we don't expect that to happen, and so it would be odd and maybe not very thoughtful to try and get a bank building built, or expect bank buildings to turn up if the market is telling us that that's not really gonna happen. That, I mean, again, it's a hypothetical example, but that's what I'm dealing with. That's what we're trying to look at. If you look at Putney Road.
Any of them that are sort of, anything, what do you expect to get built down on Putney Road?
Well, I think that's, that's what, that's what, that's what the part of the exercise that we want to move to now. I think it's a really good question, it's an important question to us now.
If the yogurt plant went out, the market tax zone, I mean, there's not a lot of pressure out on, on Putney Road right now.
No, that's exactly.
There's not a lot of building pressure across the town.
No, there's not, which is, which is the backstory to this whole project in some, in some really important ways. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Danny and then Betty, but.
In light of, I tend to agree pretty much with what the past gentleman was saying about.
Adam.
I'm sorry.
Adam.
Or not Adam, it's Betty.
Oh, Tim.
And I think we should ask the question slightly differently. We ask, we go through the list, and we're thinking about the four predefined zones.
Right.
Is there any reason that any of these on this list really, we really ought to associate them with one zone over another? Because otherwise, I don't see any natural reason why we can't have a, a similar mix, and wouldn't want to have a robust multi-sector mix in every one of these zones. To me, I don't know, these zones are obviously a construct that you live with, and that people along the planning here have lived with for a long time. But to me, they mean nothing. If Canal Street, if, had a nice mix of residential and a whole bunch of different kinds of industry and business, and it was, and also had a similar kind of mix on Putney Road and Downtown, that, that would be perfectly fine by me. And so, I, I think, I don't see why we wouldn't, I think we should just ask the question slightly differently. And, and I also, I'm, I'm coming this way in part because of what Roger said earlier, which was that the planners led us down a garden path 25 years ago with segmenting. You know, we're gonna put these things over here and these things over here. And then, now it sounds like we get around to this point in the conversation, and we're sort of standing ready to do the same thing. Why not have it all in all these different places? Unless there's something real specific that says, you know what, if we're gonna get another dairy, it needs to go over here, or the best place for everybody to be over here, we should put some energy behind that.
Yeah, we, we talked a lot about mixed use, I think we're moving, there are some things that clearly have plenty of strategy. We don't want to mix truck traffic and noise and 24/7.
Yeah, yeah, but I think when we get around to the specifics that are on our list, and, and the types of businesses that we're talking about existing here in Brattleboro, like where 25 employees is really large, that business about truck traffic and warehouses and stuff, you know, that's not gonna be that big a factor.
And Downtown is a walkable neighborhood, which each of the other three are not. I mean, within the village of West Brattleboro, it's watchable, but Putney Road is not a walkable neighborhood. I mean, maybe in 50 years, if it's built out as mixed use, it might be, but right now it's not. And Canal Street's a car vehicular neighborhood.
Right.
We're hearing some, a couple people second through time, which is great. It sounds like we don't want to say where yet, so maybe we can do some Q and A.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, why don't we, why don't we work this issue through a little more? I mean, that's fine.
He said, I just want, I, I wanna, I wanna add on what he said. Having had a very successful fish market in the eighties on Putney Road, Adam worked for us then, which he's on Putney Road, would never go downtown because the whole difference was you'd have, you have to pay for parking here, and there was this spontaneous free parking that the person could come in and out, and it made all the difference in the world. So I see them as, as being completely different, as long as the Downtown wants to continue to charge people to park. I'd find that is a deep bad incentive to want to have a market like that.
At a later time, we might sort of talk about some, doing some categorizing of shopping based on what people are looking for as far as parking, and just don't have time to do it today. This gentleman's been cutting in this late.
I think that what the people here are trying to get to, you know, presenting this, is that we all have a number of ideas in our minds about the community, and there are pre-existing community conditions for each of these neighborhoods. And rather than them coming up with the idea, they thought that perhaps all of us together could use our minds and delve deeply into our subconsciousness to see what those pre-existing conditions are, and what is most suitable in our minds as to where would be appropriate for this. We're not talking about, you know, what Brattleboro can be like 50, 250 years from now. We're talking about 10 or 15 years. How many buildings are we gonna be able to build in 10 or 15 years to completely revamp how every single district in Brattleboro works? We've got parking issues, we've got mixed-use places that are high density downtown, we've got low density in, on Putney Road. We have a much more rural idea with a much bigger tourist traffic in West B. And in Canal Street, we have a major, major employers like medical and stuff like that. And we've got these conditions that already exist. How can we support those and work towards all of that census data that we've seen, and extrapolate from there what would be appropriate for the next 10 years based on these rules?
That's, that, very, very well. And Dora, just before you, just before you start, what I want to say is, so the things that are in the back of our minds as planning professionals include such things as, if you go back to the Canal Street Gateway Study, which was done in the early 2000s, it made a lot of very practical, very basic recommendations about such things as how many trees, what size they should be, where they should be planted, what sort of signs you could have, where they need to be located, very physically specific things about the streetscape, and what then would be behind the streetscape, including the buildings. And one of the observations that I think might pass most residents and people who move in and around Brattleboro all day long is that between the high school and the hospital, we have probably close on 1,000 to 1,500 professional workers within walking distance of the Price Chopper Plaza all day long. And if you were to go to the Price Chopper Plaza and expect to enjoy certain kinds of services, including a nice place to eat lunch that was different from a bagel shop, or gift shop, or a whole bunch of other services that might be more professional, or you might expect to see perhaps a stronger presence from the hospital itself in that, in that plaza as it expands, how do we, what do we, what small adjustments can we make to facilitate that? How would we encourage faculty from the high school to walk from the high school to the, to the store rather than drive from the high school to the parking lot of the supermarket to buy their groceries, to drive home? So how would you encourage people to, if they get off at exit one to get gas, actually recognize that Downtown is a distinctive retail and recreational space and cultural, with, with great cultural assets that they haven't yet discovered? Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to get to with this work, more than the much more grand scale or more amorphous kinds of things. We're actually talking about very practical things. What happens when you peel off exit three? What happens when you peel off exit one? What happens when you peel off exit two? Not just as a tourist, but as a resident. What do you see, what do you feel? How could it be adjusted and changed in some subtle ways that would make a distinctive difference? What we're hoping is that each district will become more distinctive, more unique, more different from each other, right? But, and, and in that way be complementary, and so that you would actually see some emerging things. And again, everyone acknowledges how fabulous the Downtown is, how do we make sure it stays that way? So, Dora.
That's the next, that's the next evening together.
Right.
Yeah, the how is coming up.
Before I'm gonna, before I say what I was gonna say, I just wanted to remind you what Rubio said, and that is that, I think, my, my feeling is that everybody understands that that's what we're looking, that that's what's being looked for. I think my, what I'm hearing is that there's a sense that the data is insufficient from which to work to make those determinations, and that people are looking for more. People are looking, looking to, to come to a common understanding of what all of those, those, those different areas are, because, you know, you have to, you have to have that before you can move on and say what should and shouldn't be. But, you know, be that as it may, since this is what is being asked, I'm gonna say that it's, you know, if what we're talking about is looking at, you know, the, the, the numbers for retail, perhaps one of the things that needs to happen particularly out of Putney Road, maybe we need to create a technology, you know, a, a green technology separate from the industrial area, separate from, you know, and take some of those buildings that are now closing and not being used for stuff, and probably won't support more retail. And, you know, create a technology, green technology zone, create something, and provide incentives for people to, you know, for things to happen there. I mean, that could be one idea of something that we could do to change how, you know, do the, do the livable walking community out in a place in a smaller scale than what's in the Putney Road plan, because that's really a huge, I think, overinflated numbers that, 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 you know, certainly in the near future. But you could create a small area around some of the shopping centers where you're doing mixed use and housing, and, that being said, that's hard to do until the state actually does Putney Road with the avenue, because nobody wants to live down there until that is created. There are also other things like bike paths and, you know, improving, improving walkability in different areas, which make it more functional for people to both work and live in, in an area. So I, I mean, I think, I think those are some things that could be done in some of these sections to actually improve on that, if we're talking about the little things that can be done.
Sure, okay, Tim.
Another comment, and that's, to go back to point number one, where does Brattleboro's economic growth come from? Assuming that we have economic growth, are we assuming we have economic growth with no population growth? Or are we looking for population growth as part of the economic growth? What, what Dora was giving me about is, you know, we could put mixed-use housing up on Putney Road, but nobody wants to go and live up on Putney Road, because it's a lousy, would be a lousy neighborhood right now to walk around and to live in.
Right.
I say a lousy neighborhood, I'm sure there's people that live there. So to, to me, there's, there's a, there's an inherent assumption that economic growth also infers population growth.
Well, actually, that's a really good point, because in fact, if you go back to those screens that Roger's got as part of this presentation, there's a couple of really compelling things that come out here. One is that we've had very flat population growth, and it doesn't look like it's gonna change in the next 10-year period. Consistent with that, we've had pretty low levels of economic growth relative to some of our neighbors, and certainly relative to the national, to the national picture. So if you're talking about market responses, like, like Dora's talking about, it's difficult to imagine in the next five to 10 years that those things are gonna happen unless there's some kind of external, big external spur, like federal or state funding, which I also don't think, given the context, is likely.
We say it's not that, we say it's Keen, when, when, over the last decade, 3.1%.
Hmm?
Now, we took a, look at Brattleboro, right, 3.1% over the next decade, which is what we're trying to plan for.
Right.
And that is, someone's gonna tell me what the number is. We're gonna go from 12,000 to, well, 11,000, another 500. So we have to find, we have to find homes for 500 people.
Right.
Okay, that's inherent in that, if we get a growth like Keen, or we're looking for a growth like Keen, and then necessary economic spin-off from that. Where do those 500 people, I think? So, so can we talk about the residential aspects of that?
We're gonna, we're gonna focus on the commercial for a couple of reasons. One is, that's the whole purpose of the exercise. Number two, just in general, very broad terms.
You can't tell, right?
Well.
Well, I mean, as, by the way, people are leaning, and we're getting.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Wrapping around the axle here a little bit. All we did was ask one question and get answers, which is where would it come from? We didn't say we liked some better than others, we didn't say we really looked at all the positive and negative impacts, does it mean more population or less? So we just, that was just a listing of what might be kind of cool if we could have it happen. I think over time, you're gonna go back and say, gee, if we're gonna do this over retirement, does that mean new houses, or it mean conversions, does it mean my neighborhood, or does it mean your neighborhood? So this was not meant to be now they're in. This was just meant to be kind of a listing of what would be cool if, if and if, but we don't know the ifs yet. That's a different issue.
Yeah, and I think in practical terms, if we, if we're talking about mixed-use neighborhoods, I think the general theme here is that we would be in every instance. Either they already are, or we expect them to be more like that. So we're expecting that we would need to build attractive commercial districts.
To support them.
To support that, which would be mixed use, right?
So, the, 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 the first step was, what would be cool, what would be nice? And then we're, I think over time, we start looking at, does it fit? Is it appropriate? Is it realistic?
Is it feasible?
This was just that first step, there's a whole lot of questions about all these, about, and that's where the, the whole how question comes in, how are we gonna make that happen?
Right.
We need to wrap up, and we're getting some questions from the same people, but I hope everybody saw something positive here. I mean, I think as you walked in here this morning, seven in the morning, and you had someone had said, where's Brattleboro gonna get a lot of it? Well, through the next 20 years, 10 years. And you might have come up with a couple ideas? We might do this, we might do this. If I discount my fingers right, you just came up with 21 in here. So that clearly to me says there's some interesting potential. You may not go with 21, you may go with 10, you may go with 5, you may go with 18. But it does indicate that there is areas for this to happen. Now we have to deal with how to make it, which ones to pick, which ones are more important. And then, how do we help ride with these commercial districts, saying, should the lot sizes be big? Should it be small? Should it require a two-lane road or a four-lane? Should you acquire a sidewalk or not? And that's that kind of mixture of, you know, the perfect things for what's, what neighborhoods. But I hope people are pretty encouraged with, with that. That, that speaks well to the potential.
Adam, did you want us to just?
I was gonna count our tens.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I think, I think looking at the trends, the sort of, the data would, would say that most reasonably, what we might expect to come is a chain retailer come to town. And I think we have to ask ourselves, where do we want it? And be set up for a lifestyle center or some sort of, some sort of. center or some sort of, some sort of business like that. And I think that's a difficult question for us to, to answer as a community, and I think we, I think it does make sense that you prepare for it when they, when they come knocking on the door and say, I want to develop 21 acres, West Bee, Canal, or...
Right.
And what, being that we still have hands going up and some people to get you...
I should, yeah.
Can they get back to you?
Yes.
Emails?
Right. Anyone who has to go but wants to continue the conversation, visit the Planning Department website, visit our website for the town plan, or give me an email or sue, sue an email. You know how to find us.
Call Roger at night.
Very late. We'll make sure we...
If you're listening back there.
Right, okay. So thank you.
And... And you'll let people know when they can reconvene?
Yes, we'll, and we'll be in touch, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you to Roger. Thank you, Stu.
Happy spring.